They copied it off my wife's Facebook, a picture of her and I. And they used it as their profile picture. They used my first middle and last name. They used my Supreme Court win. Now it's time to deploy my Twitter suit. So I have this Rico case, right? My name is Justin Riddle. I live in Omaha. My address is irrelevant. I'm not required to give it.
Sir, it is a statutory requirement.
It's not.
It's a statutory requirement.
It's not a state law. It's not a law. So thank you. My time will start now.
Could you please cut the mic, please?
Hey, guys. Here at the Nebraska State Capitol. And today we're going to find out if they will answer the question that maybe some of you have gotten in the past. And what is that question you say? That question is, where does it say that you cannot investigate something if there's active litigation? I don't know if anybody else has ever gotten that excuse. If you filed a complaint against a state agency or otherwise, and they say, I'm sorry, sir. Well, we can't, uh, we can't do anything if it's an active litigation.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm fine. Uh, I wanted to make sure that you guys get this letter because.
Sure.
And then maybe you could clarify. I'm recording, as you know. Where's the information that says you can't investigate something that is in litigation?
Well, um, I understand that you emailed our office about this, so.
Yeah, this one's just a simple general inquiry question. I, I've looked online. I can't find it.
Yeah, well, um, I can't answer that for you.
Who, who could answer that? It seems like every time I come, I always get the same thing, which is no answer. And then, uh, well, then when I do get an answer, what do I get? Something that's false. And then when I say this is false, I get told, well, we're not going to change anything, sir. All I'm asking is, you, you guys have quoted it. You've quoted it. We can't look at anything that's in litigation. Where do you get that information? You're the one who says it.
I'm the one who said that?
I'd have to look back, but it was.
I think you should look back.
Okay, well, then it was the other gal that I spoke with. One of the two of you said that. And you used the word, well, and we'd be adversarial. We'd be the adversary. That was your guys' word. Maybe it was the other gal, but it was here.
Well, I don't, I don't know what you're referring to, but typically we do inform people if they have charges against them. We represent the state, so, you know, we, if you had charges or something like that, we would, we would let you know that we would be an adversarial part of your case since we represent the state. But I, I don't know what in context you heard that.
Well, so then just to make it crystal clear, your department, the Department of Banking and Finance, the Attorney General's Office, the Federal Reserve of Kansas City, for example, those four, for starts. They are allowed to investigate things when there is ongoing litigation, correct?
I'm not going to speak to this big situation.
It's not big. It's, that was super accurate and clear. I named four places. You guys oversee at least two or, well, three, including yourself.
Oversee what?
Three, including yourself, places?
Oversee what?
Oversee.
Oversee what?
Oversee them as, well, if somebody complains about the Department of Banking and Finance, would that be something you might look into?
We represent the Department of Banking and Finance.
So that's the issue. So what you're saying is you're going to represent the state versus the consumer when the state is the accused. And so as a result, that's why you'll never investigate things that.
You're putting words into my mouth.
Well, you just said, correct.
Correct in the terms that we function as the legal advisor to state agencies, boards and commissions. That's our function.
So what's your role for a consumer?
We have some authority under the Consumer Protection Act. Um, but, you know, I, I.
Who has more authority?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Than you guys? Well, if you only have some authority and consumers need protection, who has more authority?
It's a very broad question.
It's not, if you're not the agency, there should be somebody you could readily say goes, I mean, like, to me, okay, if I have an issue with somebody, I can go to the AG. But if you're saying, is it untrue? Well, there's some sort of an issue.
We don't have all issues, so you'd have to be more specific.
Sure, like the school district.
What about that?
The issue with the school district.
Well, it depends on what the issue is.
Okay, well, complaints, if complaints were made by citizens against a school district about other citizens being unfairly treated in meetings, you guys would investigate that.
Um, so we enforce the Open Meetings Act. Um, all that information is on our website. If you want to take a look at it, we then provided an outline of the act. But when it comes to open meetings, our office enforces, um, the act when people are complaining to us about state governmental bodies. If it's at the county level or below, it's going to be your county attorney.
I have a letter that says you guys looked into it.
It was probably submitted a long time ago.
Oh, so this has changed?
It's, it's a, it's a newer.
How new?
Probably in the last year. We updated our webpage, so.
So who then should I talk to? That gives me a whole nother party involved. You don't know? So like, here, you can't say, here's, like, here's who I would suggest you talk to for the, Douglas County Attorney, maybe Omaha Public Schools area.
Again, sir, I don't know what exactly your situation is.
Well, I just told you.
It really depends on a lot of details. It depends on a lot of details.
Well, what details would you need?
I would have to check. It's my understanding that we did write you or write or issued some sort of disposition letter.
Yeah, but it contained lies and that much I've proven, so if you guys aren't willing to address your own truths, I'm not.
I don't, I don't know what you mean, but, uh.
What do you mean? Would you like to see the lie? Yes or no?
I personally, I.
See what I mean? Boom, nobody will. Think about it.
Is this, is what your full news is just?
No, I want to know who says you guys can't do anything with litigation?
Okay, Mr. Riddle, I'm gonna have to say that I will forward this to appropriate people in our office. It will be reviewed and any communication we have with you from this point forward should be done in writing.
No, I'll do it in person because nobody responds. And then when they do, they send a letter that contains lies. And that's a problem for someone like me from Nebraska, born and raised, that doesn't like being lied to or told lies by my own government. That's the problem. Now, I'm offering you again, would you like to see proof that you can't refute of a liar? Or would you prefer not to because you can't do anything? And gosh, you're the one here talking to me. But as a design, I can never get to talk to a person who thinks or makes decisions. And so as a result, I can't show anybody the lie because they all just pretend it's not there.
If you have concerns that you believe belong, belong rightfully before our office, you can submit them in writing. I'm assuming that's what this is.
No, that's to ask.
Okay.
Why can't you discuss things that are in litigation? Because I've got everybody saying that.
Mr. Riddle, let me explain to you a little bit about my role. So I'm Director of Constituent Services. I'm not an attorney. I talk to constituents all day, every day, all across the state.
Why did they send you to talk to me?
Because that is my role. I make sure that.
So your role is to talk to people, but never know anything, even the most basic of questions?
Okay, as I was saying, my role is to talk with constituents. If they believe that their issue is before our office, then I would see that it's reviewed by the appropriate people in our office. And if it's an outside agency, I would refer them to another agency. So I will take what you've submitted here today. I will see that it's reviewed by the appropriate people of our office, and that's what I can promise.
So you don't want to see the evidence?
I'm not going to be.
Who should, who should I present it to? Oh, my goodness. Look at this.
Mr. Riddle?
Look at this.
Mr. Riddle?
This is crazy. I've been sitting here the whole time. I haven't raised my voice.
Mr. Riddle, the last two visits you've been here, you have been very disruptive.
In what sense?
You disrupted.
Is this disruptive?
It's getting to that.
And, and the reason is because you refuse to look at that evidence and truth, and you guys lie.
No, sir.
Is that what I'm to understand?
What I want you to understand is that what you've brought here today, I will see that it's reviewed by the appropriate people in our office. And any further communication you have with this office should be done in writing.
I'll do it in person. That's my legal right. Say that it's not. Please say that it's not.
If you come here and continue to disrupt our staff, I am.
Am I being disruptive according to what you guys can see? Anybody here want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'll hear in a second. It's a paper. Piece of paper. Because we have capital rules here, okay?
And what is the rule?
We'll give you a capital rules right here. And they're also posted online as well.
Um, this is the part I want you to pay attention to. Right here, conduct impeding or, bear with me, I don't, don't have my readers on. Uh, disturbing public employees.
Sure, yeah, okay. So you're saying that while merely asking a question here is disturbing public employees whose jobs it is to answer these questions?
You have a lawsuit pending, correct?
What does that have to do with anything?
Because they made it very clear, you're not welcome back here. You can do your business over the phone, right?
Wait, you just said I have a lawsuit pending. I said, what does that have to do with anything?
If you have a lawsuit pending, why, why are you trying to take actions?
It's not that I'm trying to take actions. I'm trying to clarify what reality is and the truth.
Okay, any communication that you would need to have with this office?
Well, I can, I, I would like to finish. Hold on, fellas. She didn't want to finish then, and now we're having a conversation, and she wants to interrupt. That's impolite.
Hey, here's the most important part. What she says, we're going to support because of the rules and regulations by the Nebraska.
And so define causing, define impeding or disturbing public employees in the performance of their duties.
So impeding is what you're doing right now.
How?
Nobody's allowed to do anything else because you're here.
What's their job?
I don't know. But, but here's, here's the thing.
She said this was her job.
She made it very clear.
She said, did you say this was your job? Yes or no?
Mr. Riddle.
You guys.
She already said, hey, you send it over email, so it will review it.
Wonderful.
So here, here's what's going to happen. And because, uh, she's asked you not to come back anymore. All right, did you hear that?
I did hear it loud and clear.
And so if you are to show back up, we're going to implement a trespass warning. We don't want to have to do that.
You won't have to do it. I won't show back up, but I am so grateful I caught this all on video.
Absolutely. I, I want you to catch it on video.
I bet you do.
Yes, because I want you to be able to look back and have an understanding as to what a trespass warning is. Okay? So we don't.
Well, you make a valid point because I've never been trespassed before, so you're right. Very, not anywhere, ever.
So here's the thing.
Very valid.
Trespass warning, if you're to come back without any business already scheduled, you're going to be banned.
With this officer anywhere.
In the Capitol Building. You're going to be banned.
And what does scheduled mean?
Means that you already made arrangements with their office.
Which office?
The Attorney General's Office.
And so if it's some other office, and I come in here and they say, we don't know he's supposed to be here, you're going to trespass me, yes or no?
The part of the trespass warning is you will be banned from the Capitol.
You didn't hear my question. If I'm here looking to meet with somebody else, and they don't know that, and they see me and they call you guys.
You would be banned from the Capitol complex. So the entire.
Fair enough. Bold statement.
So that, that, that.
Sure, so are you telling me to leave?
Yes, I'm asking you to leave.
You're not asking, you're telling.
It's our desire that you not come in here and disrupt our staff.
And I've been disruptive.
The last times you were.
I have those on video too.
Great.
So we know who wasn't disruptive.
We did get feedback from our staff. I talked to you for quite some time here. Um, you didn't allow me to speak. You were speaking so loudly. You disrupted.
I have a.
You disrupted staff from down the hall.
Sorry, I guess I could miss it. I don't know how I could speak. What is she saying though?
You're not listening.
What difference does it make? She never says anything of value. She's repeating irrelevant items.
What did you hear me say?
I didn't hear you say anything that answered the question I came in for, which means you're telling me what you want to say and not what needs to be addressed.
I want you to understand that your last two visits to our office was very disruptive to our staff. We had staff members who were affected from down the hall because you were yelling so loudly.
I was yelling?
Yes, sir.
At what decibel is yelling begin?
We don't measure loud.
Okay, how far can you hear a yell versus a loud voice by nature in this building?
I have no interest in arguing.
Well, of course not, because nothing you're saying is true, but you can tell me to leave.
You were speaking loud enough that you.
I speak loud enough by nature. That's how I talk. And I have an earbud in there. Is that better? No, I don't have that echo. Oh, I guess I could have talked this out.
Sir, any further.
Good point, but it wasn't disruptive.
Further communication you have with this office can be done in writing.
Mm-hmm.
We do it every day for our constituents. It's not necessary for you to come here in person.
That's your opinion, but you've already made your intent clear, so I don't need to come back, sure. Are you telling me I need to leave?
I'm asking.
Are you telling me to leave?
It's the same.
It's not the same, and you understand the difference.
Would you please leave our office?
I would like to be told.
Leave our office.
Mr. Riddle.
Thank you.
Yes, it is very clear.
Well, it is very clear, and you guys don't know the law. Which way is the way to?
South?
The sun side.
Oh, you're looking for the south side. Straight down to Spexan, that's the door right here.
Perfect. They, they gave you guys the wrong impression, thinking you needed three people.
Well, the thing is, when you come in and in the past, you've been disruptive.
I haven't. I haven't on video. They're lying to you. And the reason I came here is because they're lying, and you guys, look, I'm in Nebraska. I know you guys are too. And, and, and the one thing I can say is that, is there a drink? Can you find right here? No, probably not. They're like a quarter mile away.
But we'll, we'll have a conversation over here.
I'm just thirsty. It's like dry as heck in here from being so humid, but here's the thing.
Have a discussion.
Think about it this way. Here's what I presented, okay? Seven years ago now, a bank lied on a document, right? Literally, it was, there was no question. It's all, I have the evidence. They know it. The bank knows it. The AG, the OMP, the Bank, the Department, the FRC, uh, they all lied and ignored it. Five years later, last year, I won in the Supreme Court without an attorney because it was the truth. It just took that long to get the truth out. This time, they conducted an investigation because the community said this guy and his mother were improperly treated. Sorry.
You, you and your mom?
Yeah. We were, like, we were the alleged victims according to the complaints.
Okay.
Well, they spoke to the school district, and they never asked us. Then they published lies. Like, when I say lies, I mean, she knew it enough that she refused to see it because they already know, because I've already sent it with proof.
Was it the bank then, or who?
No, this was against the school district.
Oh, yeah, but, but just, you, you have to just understand how the lawsuits work. If, if.
Oh, no, no, no. I went in the Supreme Court. I understand how the lawsuit works, but what I'm saying is, why is this office lying? Why are they publishing lies?
You know that we don't have that information.
They, the Attorney General.
I know, I know, but here's the thing. Our job here is to keep public.
Oh, you guys?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Of course I know that. That's why I'm telling you. They gave you the wrong impression. I am every guy that every school board has tried to get in trouble.
Just, just hear me out. I, I got it. Your disservice with them, but our thing is, we have to keep the public.
I understand.
And so when you, when you show back up, and we are constantly going back up there because it's.
That's, that's, you think about that. Oh, my gosh, this guy's so disruptive. You walk in, I'm sitting there.
Just, just, just hear, just hear me out.
And I take this out. I can talk softer. I wasn't thinking about it.
But just hear me out. But you, you do understand that when they have a disruption, uh, impede, even if impeding is, hey, you're demanding answers. We can't give it to you, and you're, you're at very.
But you don't understand.
Like we're talking right now.
And they know they're lying, and they're refusing to look at the lie because they know that proves they're wrong.
But if you have paperwork already laid out and filed, you have to let that cross the plate.
I haven't sued these folks. I'm suing the school.
I got you.
Do you get what I'm saying?
So, but here's the thing, just.
All of the traditional excuses don't work because none of them are relevant. Here's what happened. They got complaints from the community, not me or my mom. We were the victims. They checked with the school and took what they said lock, stock and barrel and never talked to us. They then published that stuff and said three things that were patently false, and one of which is so painfully obvious that, I mean, that it would take me two tenths of a second to show you. It's just fact or not fact. It's, there's no dispute. So at the end of the day, when I come down here and say, wait, you guys did this investigation two years ago, okay? I'd just like to know how you came to that conclusion, may I say? Sorry, private investigation, we're not, sorry, private investigation, we're not going to tell you anything, right? And I say, but I was the alleged victim, and you said in your response, you looked at the, um, at the meeting and talked to the school district. So like, what could be so private about me that I wouldn't have a right to due process to defend myself? Or my mother, who taught there for 36 years? You know what I mean? They, they literally put lies about one of their own retired pension employees, not just me, some guy that, you know, seems eccentric.
And, and, I, I understand your frustration.
Well, I'm not, you know, you don't have to. I'll take care of it. What I'm saying is they told you guys things that aren't true.
Yeah.
I get it, it does kind of.
And here's the deal with Mr. Riddle. We don't, we don't know anything about what's.
You should want to.
What's going on. But, you know, it's obviously.
If it can happen to me with the bank and the Banking Department of Finance and the AG and the OMP and the Kansas City Survey in 2019 or 2017, and it can happen to me with the school and the OMP and the AG's office and, uh, the school district in 2021. The only thing that changed is the bad actor. The maneuvers of the system are all the same, which is obfuscate, ignore, hide, suppress, call you guys. I, I mean.
Do, let's just, let's, let's find the medium ground of this.
Well, I'm not going to come back.
But just, just hear me out. If, if you wanted to come back and talk to somebody, reach out to Capitol Security. So at least we're aware.
And, and, Mr. Riddle, you're complying, so you're not banned from Capitol. Well, it is. You're, you're complying.
According to them, you'll hear your.
It's just, don't, don't go up there and talk, you know, whatever.
And talk. You get what I'm saying?
You're complying, you're complying.
I mean, you guys had to have talked. Why isn't this guy shouting? I mean, I hear him talking, but.
But well, they take calls like everybody else. And like, well, there's two sides to every story. We don't, our job, like you said, is just to make sure we're in charge of security. This is what we need. You're complying with what they said, as far as I'm concerned, we're good to go.
Well, and you showed up last time, and I wasn't being loud.
No.
I mean, I talk like this, but, and I realize it does have to like, it's a big hall of people.
We're there frustrated, we could tell you the same thing, and, and there's nothing they can do at this point.
But you have to remember, that's like telling somebody that Kyle Rittenhouse is a murderer because the, the news edited out where it looks like you just see him shooting people, but you missed the whole time. He's running away saying, see, you know, friendly, friendly, and people are attacking him, and he's like, and finally he has to shoot. Then he tries to get to the.
Remember, he went through the process though to, to say, I'm not, I'm not there. You've got to, and, and.
And it was, but the, but the corruption is the same, and they're in charge of that process.
But, but just do this. Keep away from there. If you.
Yeah, no, I don't need to come back.
But, but, Mr. Riddle, if you decide you want to come back, just reach out to Capitol Security. So at least we're aware. And, uh, and then just, if you are aware of your business here, always just leave them.
It's a long trip for me to get here. I don't really have much reason. Well, just Omaha, but I mean, considering in the middle of the day when I've got things going on. So it's, it's, it's work, but I, I do appreciate.
And I think there's steps for you to get what you're looking for.
Oh, there are steps, and I will follow them. Uh, but yeah, no, I guess. Don't, don't, don't be deceived by their faces and expressions of, um, you know what I mean? Because, is this mine? Oh, yeah, this is mine. I was like, I have one extra thing. Thanks, guys.
See you.
Greetings and salutations. Welcome back to the Legal Beagle, Justin. I hear you have a ton of that stuff going on over there. What? Tell us what's going on exactly.
Uh, first off, thanks so much for having me back. I've, I've gotten a lot of great feedback, and, and I've been watching your, uh, your channel. And, uh, I think everybody can benefit from what you bring to people, whether it's your own stuff or somebody like me. Uh, so everybody should, should make sure to give you likes and follows and everything like that, but.
Thank you, I hope so.
Yeah. At the risk of trying to condense this as much as possible, but still follow a storyline, I'm going to give you a complex story here, and I'm going to try to say it kind of quick. So cut me if you, if I skip something and you say, wait, how did we get here? Because I'm going to take you from September 13, or September of '23 to today. And I'm going to show you the insane things that have happened in between and why it just changed the game for everybody watching this. So I don't know if I mentioned this last time, but in 2021, uh, I had gone to a school board meeting with my mom. They silenced us because they didn't like what we were saying. Uh, they escorted us out. Well, following that, now I'm going to take this out of order for a sec. Immediately after that, numerous people from the community filed complaints with the Attorney General saying, hey, this lady who taught here.
Now, who are we, who are we, who we have, who we have beef with here?
This right here was at the, um, Omaha Public School Board.
Okay.
And if you go to my page, it's one of the newer videos I put on there because I was like, ah, everybody should see this video. So every single thing I'm saying, by the end of the time that I finish right now, you will realize you can find, uh, like on my YouTube or in my brief, like, I, I've got everything. you will realize you can find, uh, like on my YouTube or in my brief, like, I, I've got everything. It's nothing I'm saying.
And I'm guessing that the Omaha schools are going to, uh, branch into a few other things, yeah?
Oh buddy, not only do they. Time to throw on your hats.
All right, all right. I'm excited. Let's, let's, uh, let's, let's hear it.
Okay, so multiple members of the community filed complaints with the attorney general, protesting the fact that we were silenced and then escorted out of the meeting, right? Well, I didn't know about that at the time, but what I did know is I got a call the next day from the head of the, uh, health and wellness, health and mental health and wellness department for the Omaha Police Department, asking me, you know, we heard you were just so upset at the meeting. And I was like, I don't know what you're talking about. Did you watch the video? And he's like, yeah. It's like, did you see anything? And he was like, no. I was like, so who, who, you know, who puts you together and made you call me? And he is like, yeah. So first, you know, interaction with the cops calling me after a school board meeting, mind you, nobody let that slip by. The cops called me for going to a school board meeting. So that didn't dissuade me. I went to the next one. And so a kid online, on Twitter actually, had found me because I had been saying on OPS's website, like, hey, you know, they silenced us at this meeting, blah, blah, blah. And he said, hey, they suspended me for not putting my mask up fast enough between bites while we were at different tables that were even at that, we were fifteen feet away or more from people. So he, this kid got suspended for five days. It's like a kid that's never done anything wrong, you know what I mean?
Now, this, was this back in twenty twenty?
This was in twenty twenty one, yeah.
Oh, okay, twenty twenty one.
Yep. And, well, actually, his situation may have been, actually, it probably was in twenty twenty. But this all happened in August of twenty twenty one.
Gotcha. Yeah.
So he found me and he was like, oh, here's somebody that's pounding on the school board and reached out and he's like, I'm gonna go to the next school board. I'm not gonna talk. I'm just gonna go there, you know, so you got support. Cool. So that next meeting, I showed up, which, you know, they thought maybe by having the cops call me, I wouldn't show up, but no, no, I did. Before, so I spoke, he didn't speak. Before he even got home, the cops had called his parents and then, right, like, as if he's done something wrong by going to this meeting. The next day, the cops show up at his house. They wanna search his room. They tell his parents like, well, we just, you know, we're not quite sure he was, you know, disruptive, blah, blah, blah. Who knows exactly how they said it, although the next part I have. So he called, he texts me and he's like, dude, the cops showed up at my house to search my room. And I was like, did you let him? He's like, well, I wasn't home. My parents said they'll have, he'll, they'll have to come back when I'm home. And I said, well, tell, I was like, did you get his number? Because I promise you, he's not coming back when I get done talking to him. So that would be one of the phone calls in the YouTube. I think it's titled something like Omaha Public Schools Use Police To Intimidate Parents or something like that. I used to give things clever names until I realized I'm the only one who knows what that means. So maybe I'll, I'll go back and fix it. So you probably run into that when you first started, like, no, I gotta be clear, because I got these videos that I'm like, oh, I, I just literally don't know what this is. And I don't have a good picture at the beginning. It's just my face, like.
Yeah. Cause you. IQ of seventy or below for most of these people you're dealing with.
Right, so, so I, so I get the number of the cop who, one of the two cops who stopped by, the one in charge, the head of, uh, the Omaha Lieutenant for the Omaha School Resources, Omaha Police Department, Omaha Public Schools Resources. So it's like police, but like their assignment is the school. So they're, they're cops, not school employees. They're just in the schools for, you know, security purposes. So he's a cop. Well, he's the lieutenant. And I call him and of course I record this conversation and it's fantastic. And I mean, it's, it's very cordial because one, again, I, I, I question like, who convinced you to call me? Because if you watched the videos, I don't know why you would even consider calling me. Let alone, now, on this tape, on this call, he admits that they went to a student's house. I said, what were you looking for? He's like, I, I, I don't, I don't know. And I said, well, you had to have some reason you went there. You can't just, you can't just go for no reason. He's, I, 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 we, we just, you know, well, in a situation of a threat. And I said, what was the threat? Well, I'm not gonna discuss it to you. I said, but you brought up my name to his parents, so I'm involved. Bang. And of course, that ended that part of the conversation because he had nowhere else to go. He knew there was no threat. It was all an intimidation tactic to get us to be silent, right? Showed up to the next meeting. After that, the board president for Omaha, Omaha Public Schools filed a restraining order against me. The judge, mark this one in your brains, Judge Dwayne Doherty in Omaha, he oversaw the hearing. No. I'm not gonna get into every due process violation in that hearing because I, we don't have that. Yeah, we don't have that kind of time, right? But what I will say is this was before the Kyle Rittenhouse trial. And their attorneys, because I had made a post about Kyle Rittenhouse being innocent. So their attorneys in court said that I was supportive of the murderer who crossed state, like, this isn't a transcript, which I have linked in this brief that I'm getting to here in a minute. So, so she says, I support a murderer that crossed state lines and murdered two protesters, you know, and, and of course I objected and it was overruled because everything I object was overruled except for, let me jump forward to Doherty again in December. This time when I objected, he said, no objections. Cause he already knew I objected every time they did something wrong from previous dealings with me. This time he just flatly said, no objections, which I don't know if anybody knows, but a judge telling you no objections is like in an NFL football game, telling the coach that they can't throw the yellow flag or whatever, the little bag that says, we want a review and that they can't use instant replay. I mean, that's exactly what he was trying to do. It didn't matter, because I, you'll see. So following so far?
Absolutely. They, they, the, the judge in the, uh, in the Choctaw Band hearing, we, we objected like every, every sentence. And he's like, listen, this guy, just let this guy finish. You're gonna have your say. We, we know.
I objected once.
We know.
In December, once, and he said, no objections. Cause he knew I, if, he knew everything they were saying was a lie, but I'll get to that. So they got the restraining order against me because apparently I'm a domestic terrorist, you know what I mean? For going to a school board meeting and speaking out. Uh, the judge upheld it. I got the transcript, of course. I always, always get the transcript. If you don't get the transcript, all the time you just put into something, you just wasted because you can't prove anything unless you can prove it. Simple. And you need to have it in their own writing, certified by their own person, saying, these are the real words. That way, when you say this and people go, that couldn't have happened, you go, right? Because it just is what it is. So in any case, I backed off, right? Actually, I went to a couple more meetings because I kept, it was funny because every time I would go up to speak, I would be just close enough, the board president would have to get up and leave the room because it was like at the podium right in front of them. So, so I did it on purpose because they couldn't tell me I couldn't go there, but she couldn't be within a certain distance because of her own action. So I made her get up and leave every time. It's all on video. This stuff is great. All you have to do is go to Omaha Public Schools in the, like, August to September, October of twenty twenty one, and you will see some hilarious, hilarious things. So in any case, after that, I stepped back from going because I was getting no community support. And one thing you know, as well as I do is when you do everything alone, it is ten times harder. And when you try to explain it to people and they either are really pragmatic about it because they know if they, if they take a stance or if they really look at it, they know that it's gonna change their worldview. And so they just, they can't mess with their own life that way, right? But I had had my fun with making her get up and walk out. And so I was like, I'm gonna take a break, focus on Charter West. Now, fast forward to twenty twenty three, that's when I won my website, right? So you gotta remember, the website situation, which we went over last time, started in twenty sixteen. Okay?
Okay.
I'm making sure anybody watching this understands, think about the words I literally just said. Twenty sixteen is when the bank did what they did. Twenty twenty three is when I finally won that website in the Supreme Court.
And for those, those that don't remember, Justin, Justin took Charter West Bank or, or they took him to court. They went to the Nebraska Supreme Court and he beat them. Uh, so there's a previous episode, uh, just search for Justin Riddle on our, our YouTube page and you can, you can look at that if you'd like.
Exactly. So, but you know, and the whole reason I'm saying this is because everybody gets into this situation. I need to break this down real quick because I have ADD. Y'all get used to it, but if I don't say this, I'm failing everybody that's listening right now. And if you're putting the time into it, you need to know this, okay? I get a lot of calls from people, messages, emails, whatever, saying, hey, blah, 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 here's what I've got. And I look at every single thing I'm sent every time. And the first thing I usually end up saying is, hey, if you're gonna do anything, the first thing you need to do is make a document that has everything you can think of. And then once you build it out, go back and keep billing in and you will realize that you have a ton of stuff, right? You need that to start with. Eighty-five percent of the people stop reaching out after that because they're like, I don't wanna do hard work. Okay, well, it's just the only way that you can even potentially win. And I'll tell you in a minute why you can't win, but while you'll be able to here shortly. So, um, what I was gonna say though, like, I don't care how good your evidence is. I don't care if you have murder caught on video. If you're going in a civil fashion, which you are, because if it was criminal, it would be the state bringing charges. So wipe that right out of your brain. I don't care what they did to you. If it's criminal, the state's going after them. If it's civil, it's you. If you're going after something civil, it better be important because you better recognize that even if you have a smoking gun, it's gonna take you three years to learn why you got your ass, sorry, you're kicked in court because you're not gonna realize that everything they did was actually just an elegant lie. It looks real, it sounds real, it reads like it's real. The only people that know it's not are everybody involved. So, once you join the ranks of people who, you know, do like what we do or you, you know, you're filing lawsuits, you're fighting a something, you're fighting something. And again, if it isn't important, you shouldn't be fighting because guess what? You cannot get back nine years of your life. You cannot get back the thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, thousands of hours, the, 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 your name destroyed online, the abuse you suffer, the relationships it destroys. You can't get that back. So, you know, my first case, a bank literally lied, changed a document. It was clear. I mean, it was a forgery. It wasn't, there was nothing subjective. It was obvious. And I started off thinking, oh, first the bank will fix it. Nope. Okay, well then the banking department will fix it. Nope. Okay, the AG, nope. Kansas City Fed Reserve, nope. Consumer Finance Protection Bureau, nope. FHA themselves, nope. The judges, nope. At the time, I thought it was not being able to most, you know, clearly explain to them what was going on. Well, after seven years of that, and now the school district, it's a whole different game and I'll tell you why. So, after I won my website, I went on the offensive against Omaha Public Schools because I was se- segmenting, like again, and, and again, if you think you've got one great case, chances are you think you've got ten. Great. But if you can't figure out the one that's real, real important, you're already done because it's not gonna take five minutes like you think. And even if you get ahold of me and I sit there and work with you, from the minute I wake up, the minute I go to bed every day for two months, you're not any closer to getting a victory because the system is what you're fighting, not the issue. So, um, first I filed, well, I may have told you guys this, I filed a suit against W O W T to test the system. So I filed one suit against W O W T because they silenced me on Facebook and I made a very strong argument how, W O W T, they're, uh, um, channels, uh, eight.
Okay, a local news, okay, gotcha.
And I made the argument that by suppressing my speech on Facebook by blocking me, and this is after somebody that runs their digital media through their account was like trashing my name. I, I, I mean, there's so much to this, but I'm skipping over all that. All I used it for was to calibrate the system. I filed a complaint. They waited until two days before the hearing, they filed their motion to dismiss. So one, they were late. You have to have it within five days before the judge isn't supposed to consider it. Simple. Two days before, the judge accepted it anyways, ran full steam with it. Um, and just so you guys know the argument I made, uh, the argument was simple. By being a public broadcast station that gets special privileges because they broadcast emergency signals and by representing themselves as independent and unbiased, but filtering one side, they're unjustly enriching themselves from people through advertising dollars they collect by deceiving half their audience.
Now, did you say, did you say anything that was vulgar or, uh, threatening or anything like that that they could?
I don't need to. Just when I say something, it just spins people out because there's no way around it. And so, no, I don't have to say anything vulgar to get attacked. I just get attacked, you know? So in any case, I could tell in the hearing, the judge was gonna take the stupid motion to dismiss and dismiss it. So I said, hey, since they brought it late, can I, you know, have three days to shore up the time I should have gotten? And then I'll, uh, I'll, uh, write my response or whatever. She said, yeah. So I went home, waited a half hour and then dismissed it without prejudice myself. Now, by doing so, they couldn't get the attorney fees they wanted, which was like seventy grand because they would have to sue me for those, in which case I'd accept their lawsuit and we'd go to discovery. That's untenable for them. So I took that, I took it away from the judge being able to fuck, uh, screw me over. Um, yeah, I, I took it away from the judge because she couldn't do anything because I withdrew it. So what is she gonna do? Chase me down and go, well, I still wanna make a decision. Well, you can't, you don't have jurisdiction because I pulled it. So, right after that, I filed a bare bones motion with OPS. And first thing I did, I went to Bear, uh, to their office, which incidentally is like in the second tallest building in Omaha, which isn't saying much, but it overlooks on one side the county courthouse and on the other side, the federal. And it's like the fifteenth floor of the Woodman Tower. And so, you know, as far as companies around here go, they're probably, you know, one of the upper, upper. And I went in and I just kind of flatly laid out to him like, hey, if you guys apologize and just, you know, put it in writing, you're not gonna do this stuff again, I'll go away. Right there was the biggest, the biggest fumble in the history of fumbles because he said, no, we won't do anything without litigation. I said, okay, cool. So I went and I, I, uh, composed a kind of a bare bones brief that had just enough specifics in it that they couldn't just easily dismiss it. But I mean, I, I put like, your name here, I left that in there. Like, I mean, it was, I did some things psycho- psychologically to like, make it look like I really didn't know what I was doing. I got lucky winning in the Supreme Court, right? Well, they, I filed it in state court. They removed it. Well, they waited twenty-nine days, then they removed it to federal court. Then they requested an extension. So basically they spent seventy-one days and a team of attorneys working on this brief. And I'm telling you, I read it and I was like, these guys are way better than the attorney for the bank, man. This is a whole di- different ballgame, but unfortunately for them, they just haven't, there isn't a, there isn't a, uh, there's no playbook for me because I'm doing everything my own way. So I waited thirty minutes and then I dismissed it without prejudice. Now, they asked again, they asked for, I don't know, seventy, eighty thousand dollars in lawyer's fees for the time they spent com- composing that, but they can't get anything because I just withdrew my case. But what I also had, so now you gotta remember attorneys and I, and I'm sure I explained this technique a little before, but the attorneys have an obligation to give their best arguments to make sure their client doesn't get screwed by the judge and go to discovery, right? So they gave all their arguments. Well, I took all the arguments and I basically, after I dismissed it, I just reformulated my entire brief. So I dismissed that case. I took their massive brief that they spent over two months on. And then I just reverse engineered it. So effectively what I did is I used all their own case law properly before they had a chance to use it, which means essentially their next response, they couldn't really use those same arguments the same way because I preemptively took all their case law and use it properly, which means they just sound stupid. So.
Now, they didn't come back with res judicata?
No, no, they can't. They're, they, look, they can't do anything to my strategies. I've got it all figured out legally. I mean, and they knew it and I told them what I would do. I mean, they can't do anything because I'm following the law, which they're not. So anything they try to do that forces my hand is actually gonna put them in a position where the truth comes out to more than just everybody involved. And that's, and again, I, I bring it back to, and you're gonna hear real shortly now, the, the, ever, well, I'll just keep going. So I thought, I thought, now, I wanna point something out. This comes back to what I was saying about the complaints filed with the attorney general, right? So back in twenty twenty one, people filed complaints with the attorney general. Well, they didn't tell me about it. They didn't tell my mom. All they did was communicate with Omaha Public Schools, get their side of it and then compose a lie that makes it sound like we were in the wrong. Well, oddly enough, I found it after I dismissed that case because I was just doing more research and I had, I just ran across it like a miracle online. I don't even know how this time, but. And I wondered, well, they have a silver bullet from the attorney general of Nebraska saying they did nothing wrong about this very situation that I'm suing them for. Why wouldn't they use that in their response in court? Because they could have just said, your honor, the attorney general already said we did nothing wrong. Well, the reason is, one, they never got our side of it. And two, they knew that it was impossible the way it was written and they didn't want me to ever have existed, which they knew I didn't. Otherwise I would have addressed it by then. So in any case, I found it. I got ahold of the attorney general. I went to the attorney general. Uh, they refused to correct it. Now, the level of documentation I have for this next set of circumstances is nothing short of one hundred percent of everything. I have every phone call. I have every visit on video. I have every email. I mean, I have everything, right? Well, the attorney general wouldn't fix it, whatever, blah, blah, blah. So I realized my strategy needed to shift because the federal court was ignoring the truth. I mean, the federal court, we won't get into how after they removed it, federal court, blah, 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 blah. But we'll just say it was just like typical everything elsewhere. They lied about how many kids I have, like the judge lies about how many kids I have, ignores clear, obvious facts in law, says things that just aren't true or didn't happen in his decision. I mean, anybody who cared to look could see that like, this can't be true because this is. And it's just that easy, but it never works that easy. And which is why I keep telling people, if you're gonna get involved, you better be ready for a long, long ride because it doesn't matter how good your evidence is. So in any case, I decided I needed to shift strategies. I wasn't getting anywhere with my civil rights claims. So I started filing, uh, public records requests. Well. I decided I needed to shift strategies, I wasn't getting anywhere with my civil rights claims, so I started filing uh, public records requests, well. Why did I do that? Well, because I knew they didn't want me to see all the things that led up to. The restraining order, the cops calling me, I knew this stuff existed somewhere in emails and documents, whatever it had to. And so, I started making tactical requests, well. The school district starts, uh, starts, first of all, they, they try to deny it outright. Then they're like, okay, well, we'll give you this stuff, but we need sixteen hundred dollars, half upfront. And uh, we're gonna need five weeks to do this, and of course, I'm like, I'm sorry, I asked for some emails. Only ones that specifically have my name in it, which would be a quick search, well. To condense this, I've made about fifty different. Public records requests since, I don't know, last June, May or June. Up until as recently as last week, and I'll get to those shortly, but zero. Have been properly filled, except for one. Except for one, and, and here's where it gets great. So, when I explained to my mom, hey, uh, you know, this thing is published, it's says, you know, we did something wrong. You know, she's a retired teacher, she thought, well, that's crazy, so she sent a request. And so there's a lot to this, and again, this is all on video too, the, anything I say where we went anywhere. Well, they were on the last day of their legally required four days to respond to, um. To the uh, public records request, so we went down to. TAC, which is the Teacher Administration Center for Omaha Public Schools, it's like their headquarters. And kinda just caught them off guard, well, a- as you can imagine, I'm. Well, you could actually just watch, so I won't even let you imagine, if you wanna watch, watch, but I'm, I'm relatively high pressure and. Uh, their attorney from Baird Home came down to meet with us because Ann McFarland, who's a clown that. Is a records clerk at Omaha Public Schools, but is single-handedly cho- chosen to. Put her foot on the neck of justice. Uh, she does never wanna talk to me, there's dozens of videos of her, most of them are unpublished, because. I mean, really, she, she looks so dumb in these videos that I'm afraid she'll like hurt herself if I publish them, because it'll make her look, she's like. Really high up at the school district and it's sixty thousand students, I mean. And she just looks like a bumbling fool every single time she talks, because I ask questions that she can't answer, if she does. She has to either lie or admit something she won't admit. So I just ask her and I record it and she looks stupid and she's standing there going. So in any case. I started recording or requesting tactically requesting uh, these public records. And they, you know, kept avoiding, obstructing, avoiding whatever, but. When we were down there, they sent their attorney down there and I put the pressure on him like, you know, a diamond maker. He, he convinced Dan to quickly send something off to my mom to satisfy her because my mom was with me. She sent the emails from the Attorney General to Baird Home along with the complaints. From the Attorney General, from people, now, you gotta remember. I received one hundred and fifty pages for sixteen hundred dollars. Over a hundred of which were a complete black box, like, like, black like this is white, like, you couldn't see anything, no words, there's no. They didn't just redact it, they put a black box over the entire page. The whole thing, you can't tell if it's an email, pictures of clowns, somebody scanned their butt on a copy machine, you can't tell. It's a black box, they gave no, you know, oh, well, here's what this is or here's what that is and we redacted it for this or that, so. So, obviously that's illegal, but not in Nebraska, actually, in Nebraska, you're gonna come to find nothing is illegal. So, well. You're you, not if, not if you're, you know, part of the government or a business or an attorney or whatever. So, in any case, it was a, it was a huge mistake on their part because.
So you paid sixteen hundred dollars for a hundred and fifty pages that, that were all blacked out or most of them?
Dude, uh, not, oh, no, the only things that weren't blacked were my own emails to them. But like, anything else, like, if they forwarded it, if it was, you know, anything other than this stuff I sent to them. Back then, three years ago, everything else was just totally blacked out, I couldn't, I have no idea what it was.
Wow.
And they refuse to this day to tell me, but we do know. That the crossover between my complaint and what my mom asked for is the same, and so what they gave her. With no redactions, including, I mean, the people that complained, their names, phone numbers, addresses, email addresses. Their exact complaint, the emails back and forth from Baird Home to the Attorney General, all this stuff they told me. Was protected under investigative privilege, they sent to my mom because of the pressure and they. They realized they made a big mistake, but whatever, well, you know.
Does your mom have the same last name?
No.
Okay, okay.
But they know that it's her.
Okay, maybe they do, maybe they don't.
No, they do, because she was sitting there with me when they sent it to her.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they, no, it was, it was just, they knew they had to send something. Because it's one thing to obstruct me, which banks love to do, judges love to do. State agencies love to do, school districts love to do. But my mom worked at that school district for thirty-six years for, for them not to respond to her request.
Did you have pending litigation with them at that time?
Not at that, no, it was, it, this was in between, this was after, well, actually, it was, it was on appeal to the Eighth Circuit.
Well, technically, they can deny four requests uh, for, while pending litigation to the, to the person that. Uh, is, is in litigation against them.
Here's the thing, they won't be able to for long, do you know why?
No, tell me.
They're not litigators, and I pointed this out, in fact, the most recent request I sent to the ombudsman. To the Attorney General and to the clown that seems to be the one that always gets stuck sending me emails. I said, uh, I'll, take me two seconds, I'll, this was last week. I said, simple question, your office has claimed that you are unable to investigate. Anything that is in, oh, I said legislation, I meant litigation, they knew what I meant. Despite my best efforts, I can't find a single written item available to the general public that indicates what you're claiming. To simplify the situation, all I need is one of two answers. One, yes, there's something that I can view that explicitly states. You cannot investigate anything in litigation, nor have you in the past eight years, or no. There's nothing in the public, that the public can view because it's an internal policy. That violates the constitution and we pick and choose what we will review. Now, here's the important part. If you look in your public records laws, which everybody should if they're gonna start doing this. You will find that all these longstanding traditional policies or it's always been our. Position, that isn't real, they're not legislators, they can't say. We're not gonna do our job because gosh, that's just our policy is never to do our job, when, you know. It, it, it doesn't exist, they use it as a shield, they've been using it against me as a shield for years. I've asked them before, but this time, last week, I just sent each of them that very simple, yes or no? Now, of course, they missed their window to respond already, they have no response because they know. There is nothing that pr- that allows, it's, it's not even that prevents them. There's nothing that allows them not to do their job, they are executive. Branch, not judicial branch, the two are not fungible. They are required to do their own investigations, so the very fact that they tell us, I can't do it. It's like, shut up, do your damn job, simple as that. So now y'all know, if they try to pull that, just say, oh, oh, okay, show me where it says that, oh, whoa, are you guys legislators? Are you creating legislation or are you just saying that that was probably the legislative purpose of something that says the exact opposite?
Justin, you didn't know that all three branches can uh, make legislation now? Get with the times, bro.
In, in, in Nebraska, in Nebraska, all three, all three of them can actually just create reality. It's like awesome, whatever they feel, you know, whatever your dream that your heart makes, you wish come true, that's Nebraska. If you're in charge.
It's not just Nebraska.
I know it's not, which is gonna take us to the point here very soon, and, and mind you, I actually skipped. All the federal court crap and the Eighth Circuit crap because they're equally worthless and liars. It's all coming out though, and I'll tell you how here just in a sec, so. I start pounding the Attorney General. The, the ba- Department of Banking and Finance from the stuff from years ago with the bank. Uh, the ombudsman with, and the school district with more of these requests. And every one of them comes back, we have something, but we're not showing it to you because it was used in an investigation, blah, blah, blah. So remember, on the one hand, they won't look at anything because you're in litigation. But if they ever look at anything, you can't see it because, you know, this was part of the investigation, now what they. Ignore, or at least what most people don't understand is, okay, well, so you're saying. The Omaha Public Schools people and their attorneys, they're allowed to see this information, but. I'm not, now, they're not government, or well, governmental subdivision, but that's technically irrelevant. You can't let one side see something and say the other side can't see it due to investigative purposes, that just, I mean, you can and they do all the time. But I'm trying to point out to you folks that when they say these things, they're saying it because. It sounds reasonable enough that until you've dealt with it for nine years, you kinda just go, I already knew. Well, so in any case, the ombudsman kicked me out of their office twice, refused to do their job twice. In the office, then sent me a nasty email saying that because of my behavior, I'm not allowed back, so what they do, just so y'all know. And, and this is really important, guys, this is the playbook, okay, playbook, okay? Stop doing what you're doing, that's part one, right? They tell you, stop doing what you're doing. I'm making it easy, stop doing it. Second, they do something not subtle, like have the cops call you. Stop doing what you're doing, I get it, you're cool and polite, but I am a cop and I am calling you and. Most people, once they get a call from the cops, that kind of ends it, right?
But you're not most people.
I'm not most people. So, they tell you no, they get the cops involved, then they try to punish you in other ways. Now, subtle ways that they punish you that people will never understand until they are forced into a situation they don't wanna be in, like. Nine years of litigation is, I went through every opinion for the last three years published on the Attorney General's website. And I noticed a couple of things, one, one hundred and eighty-five out of a hundred and eighty-five were in favor. Of the state or whoever it was that was trying to charge some citizen. I saw one as high as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That a school wanted from somebody who requested emails from a certain group of staff about a certain topic. Hundred and fifty grand and the AG says, yeah, I mean, you know. The owner of the university's gotta go through those one at a time and he bills, you know, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars an hour and then. After that, they've gotta, you know, have some tech security go through it, like they justify it, but even better. In one situation, they'll say something like, uh, pay stubs, and this is actually an easy one because it's another one that. You see it and you're like, what? Pay stubs, okay, pay stubs are included, and so. You know, they have to provide these pay stubs, right? But if they're saying that, the pay stubs were never what that person actually wanted. They wanted this over here, which they're being told no to, but, but the pay stubs they're getting, right? Now, on this side, you've got somebody who, all they wanted was the pay stubs. And maybe they didn't care about time sheets, right, and you know, and so over here they go, well, pay stubs are. Different, you know, and, and then they'll say it is, they'll, they'll go as far as to say like, well. You, you didn't request that from the right person, or you didn't request. You know, you, you said pay stubs, but they're in electronic form, you, you, you indicated you wanted files or. They'll say all this stuff and then they'll try to charge you thousands and thousands of dollars, but a hundred and eighty-five in a row. All in favor, and again, you could go to the Nebraska Attorney General's website, click on disposition letters and guess what you'll see? Click on any one of them, prove me wrong, find one that went in favor of the requester in three years. You can't, and that doesn't even include twenty twenty-one, which is the one that they lied about me and my mom. I didn't bother to look at twenty twenty-one because it was full of ones of school districts, I knew those were probably all lies. So in any case, uh, what they also do, they only publish some of them, right? No, they make sure to publish one if it's got my name in it because then it goes on Google and it makes me look like a problem. But maybe, like the one my mom requested to the AG, they didn't publish that one, they still responded to her. I don't see any that they've actually ruled in favor of the citizen, maybe those are the ones they don't publish too. It's either people they don't wanna trash online or it's the, you know, or a combination of ones that. Uh, you know, they didn't want people to know, okay, yeah, this company or this, this uh, agency did something bad. So, and again, all this is real. Uh, so, I filed a lawsuit for public records. Now, why did I file a law- a lawsuit for public records, it's black and white, well, they gave me a hundred and fifty pages of redacted documents. They treated different requesters differently by charging me sixteen hundred dollars and giving my mom something for free. There, you, you get what I'm saying, like, all these things that are against the law, they did and I put it all into writing, right, well.
Equal treatment under the law, right?
Here's where it starts to get really good. So, same judge that I had in twenty-one for, or uh, twenty twenty-three for W O W T. I got again for OPS, which is Shelley Stratman. And OPS filed their motion to dismiss less than twenty-four hours before our hearing. Which again, you can't do that, but they did, they created a verification clause that doesn't exist in law. We're sitting in court and the judge goes, well, we're gonna have to entertain their motion to dismiss, I said, well, we can't do that, they just sent it to us last night, I, you know. I get time to respond, she's like, yeah, but if what they're saying is right, we can't get past this, so now, again. Everybody should recognize the, if what they're saying right is right, we can't get past this, what they're saying is. We've already made a decision, you ain't going nowhere, so we're gonna let the defense talk first, that way. They don't have to answer or respond to anything you say that they've lied about, and then we can move on. So, they give their hoopla about this, that and the other, I say, yeah, all this is false, plus this, this and this. Make all these great points and uh, and then she dismisses it, she calls me disrespectful, I said, no. The whole system is disrespectful to me, I said, you're gaslighting me because I'm, because you're ignoring the truth, like, this is all in a transcript too. It's great, it's one of the best transcripts ever, so. In any case, she dismisses it without prejudice, of course, oh, without prejudice, of course, now here's the other thing, guys. Everything you do costs a bunch of money, so. Oh, don't worry, we're dismissing without prejudice, just fix that little problem, oh, well, why didn't you let me amend it? Well, you're not respecting the procedures, oh, okay, I'm sorry, well, the, that's not a procedure to say that there's. One little verification thing I missed, but you'd have to dismiss the whole case, like, you can't let me amend, they don't want you to amend, they want you to. Spend money and refile and waste time and draw it out and extend out the time so that you get outside of the statute of limitations. So in any case, the next day after that hearing, I get a letter. Certified from the Department of Unauthorized Practice of Law of the Nebraska Supreme Court. Accusing me of, uh.
Practicing law without a license?
Well, yeah, they said that I, I was practicing law without a license and that somebody had complained. That I had helped them and gave them a document and I said, cool, show me the document, well. Oh, we can't do that, okay, right, and I of course have a call with. The head of that department, who he's terrified of me now too, and it gets better. When I get to the end, the FBI won't even talk to me now, because I've got them in check, because they're a bunch of fucking, ah, I got it. We'll get into that later, so. So, Department of Unauthorized Practice of Law, I get ahold of the guy finally, I'm standing outside his office, he's at a meeting. The bar, the annual bar, weekly bar, it's like a week-long bar meeting for people that are, you know, lawyers and judges and. All the people that, the Attorney Generals, all these people that work together against us, they're all there together, including this guy. So, he basically tells me, well, I'm driving, I can't remember. You know, the exact complaint, and I said, summarize it, well, I can't summarize it, and I said, okay. How do I get this information? Well, I'm not, you know, we're not, we're not giving, we, we don't release that to the public, I said, I'm not the public, you've accused me of a crime. You put it in writing, you said that I'm gonna be penalized, you, you, you want me to sign off on this, he's like, don't sign it, I was like. Buddy, I ain't gonna sign it, but you are gonna show me that, well, here's why I said that, because it doesn't exist. Buddy, I ain't gonna sign it, but you are gonna show me that. Well, here's why I said that because it doesn't exist and I knew that and he knew that, but they were hoping that. Somewhere along the line. I would have been like, oh dang, so and so, or man, there might have been somebody. Nope. I already know what I do. So. At the end of the day. He refused, right? So now you've got, well, God, I'm not even counting all the federal court stuff. Because right now at this whole time, this is all going on. I still have my appeal in the Eighth Circuit because. Once they get something, it goes there to die. They sit on it until they can no longer sit on it, which I. Yeah, well, they don't sit on it that long for me because I use the may I help you technique, which I'll get to in a minute. So, but even with, even with that, with the Eighth Circuit, there's still foot dragger, but. I think it was in there for about. Ninety days. In any case, so. I refiled the lawsuit. I have, of course, closed the gap that. They fabricated as being real. It, it wasn't real, but I closed it anyways. And I file a new. Lawsuit. Again, that's more money out the door. They wait. Again, almost till the end and then they remove it to federal court. Now, you have to understand how absurd that is. For anybody who doesn't quite understand the system, let me give it to you in a nutshell. And this makes it easy. If you're in. Well, I'll make it really easy. Neighborhood associations make their own rules. How tall your grass can be? Can your trash cans be inside? Uh, like in front of your house or do they have to be hidden away? Uh, you know, no sheds, whatever. They make their rules. Guess who doesn't have any say in those rules? Other neighborhoods, right? That's how jurisdiction works, right? So in state, when you're dealing with state. Public records. That's a Nebraska Public Records Law. They moved it to federal court who has no jurisdiction. The federal court cannot say how Nebraska runs its public records. They have an oversight, which is Freedom of Information Act. And as long as the public records law in Nebraska, which is why. Some states have a four-day turnaround. Some states have a fourteen-day turn, like they have it all predefined, right? So they move this. To federal court, which is absurd because. Federal court has no jurisdiction, even if they made a ruling, it would just be an advisory opinion. It wouldn't matter because. They're not Nebraska law. They, they can't decide as a federal judge. How we run our state.
Yeah.
Level things. So. The, uh, so I of course filed immediately for a motion to remand. And I'm not gonna explain it all, but what I will tell you is this, because otherwise I'm just getting too far into the weeds. What I will say is this. So it got remanded back to state court. Of course, because despite the fact that they tried to ignore that, I was correct a hundred percent and a federal judge can't look at it and go. There is literally not a federal claim in this, but because these guys want it in federal court, I'm gonna take a. A Nebraska Public Records Law on, on their hand. They just couldn't do it. I forced them to push it back against their will. Well, then, and again, every time. You do something, you, then you have to file hearing, you know, file for hearing this, that and the other. And of course. Every time I try to do that, I have to jump through seventeen hoops that. Don't matter at all and then it, then they want to put, now in Nebraska. It's mandatory fifteen days or, or sooner because it's supposed to take precedence over. Any other like civil items. When it's public records because the public's right to know is very valuable. Well. Every time I do it, they schedule my hearings out forty-five days, forty days, thirty-nine days. They remand it. It gets remanded back. I say, can we keep the same day since it's back? Nope, that day's been taken. Okay. Forty-five days. So they turned something. That, you know, initially gets filed in September. And it's not till mid-November that. You're getting there when the literal law says fifteen days, but whatever, we won't get into all that. So just know. They want to keep chipping away your funds. They want to keep drawing out your time.
Yeah.
They want to keep kicking the can down the road. In the meantime, I had filed another suit. Filed it. And now. Here's the other thing that they do, and I'm gonna just keep throwing out other things that they do because every one of these is something they do. They put you with judges. Now, it depends on where you're at. I mean, if you only have one judge. You might just be screwed from the start. But in Omaha, they're like fifty judges, right? But I always get the same. One, two or three that. Always seem to be incapable of understanding basics of the law. It's weird.
It's funny how that works. It with a random draw of judges, you always get the same ones. Hmm.
So I finally get this judge when I file this time that like, oh, I've never even heard of this guy. He must be all right. I go up to schedule. He goes, oh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna recuse. I, I, uh, I have a family member. That's involved with Omaha Public Schools. Now, mind you. Omaha Public Schools is, they have it on nearly an eight hundred million dollar annual budget. They are larger than any other government business in this city except for maybe SAC. So, yeah, everybody in the city. Has a family member that works for Omaha Public Schools. I mean, that is not a reason to recuse. Not only that, just so you know. Judges are required, at least in Nebraska, to put in a document why they recused. So that it, you know, they're not just doing it for stupid reasons like this one, which was to get it back to Doherty. There's that name again, Dwayne Doherty, to get it back into Doherty's hand. And draw it out, right? So. In any case. He's not part of my Rico suit simply for recusing and not explaining his recusal because it's the law and. I know he did it to screw with me. So in any case, puts it back with Doherty, right? Well. I, I obviously know Doherty is the guy that gave them the restraining order. Because I'm a terrorist that, you know, supported Kyle Rittenhouse, the murderer. And so I immediately go for recusal, but he doesn't recuse himself. So. At this point. I've gone to the Attorney General multiple times. The Capitol Police kicks me out of the Attorney General, out of the Capitol, State Capitol, because the Attorney General's located in the State Capitol. They kick me out. Like, they don't need more because I called them first. I'm like, I'm coming down there. I'm gonna stop in your office if you want to walk with me, you know, but they won't. Uh, because.
Well, you don't get an armed guard to walk around because that's, that's what I got. I, I, I would demand it.
I, well, they, I get three every time. Watch the videos every time. And I'm sitting there like I am now, talking to some attorney general's office saying, well. I'd just like you guys to fix the truth. And then all of a sudden it's like, hello. What are you guys doing here? Three cops walk in the room. I'm like, okay. Well, and one time they actually called me to warn me not to come down because I had already sent an email. To, to the Attorney General saying, I'll be about, down there today. So then the Capitol Police called me and they're like, don't come down here. If you come down here. You're responsible for what happens. I was like, arrest me. I said, if you do, I get discovery. You guys want to avoid it. So it's almost like being untouchable because. It's like being Daniel LaRusso after, you know, they were told not to attack him. You know, until the tournament. And so he's walking by everybody and he's like, hey, Johnny, yeah, you know, because. They can't touch him. Well, it's kind of the same thing here where. What are they gonna do? They can't sue me because I'll get discovery. They can't arrest me because I'll get discovery. I've done nothing wrong, so they can't say I've actually done anything wrong. I, I'm in a position where I hold all the cards because I've done everything right and they've done everything wrong. So. I wrote, uh, a mandamus request to the Supreme Court of Nebraska, and this is a great video that, uh. Would literally blow your mind i- if you saw it, but. When I go to file it at the clerk. And again, they love stripping but fees out of you and they never read anything. I'm convinced. Most of the stuff gets dropped in the trash as soon as it comes in. It's scanned, trashed and never looked at again. Well, I tell the lady, no, there's no fee for this. Because it's about something inactive litigation and she's like, yes, there is. And I'm like, well, I didn't see anything. Well, I made it sound like I really looked, which I didn't. I just kind of wanted not to pay another fee. So then. She proceeds for the next five minutes. To not, and of course the Capitol Police come in mid-interaction here and I, and I'm like, guys. Listen to this lady here, because at this point they know that I'm the one that's been lied to. They're just doing their job, which of course I. Told them, so were the Nazis, you know what I mean? A lot of people were just doing their job. I say that to these Capitol Police. I'm like. You're not just doing your job, you're doing, you're harming a citizen. Because that's what you were told to do. So, you know, the brown shirts did that too. I, I, you know. Great role models. So in any case, this lady sits here for five minutes telling me that. There is a fee. And me saying, okay, how much is it? I'll pay it. And her going. I can't tell you the fee. I can't give you legal advice. I said, what are you talking about? Legal advice? I said, I, I'm asking you what the fee is. You said there's a fee. How much is it? Sir, I can't tell you. You'll have to find, you, blah, blah. So. For five minutes, I'm, I'm sincerely telling this lady like, so then I'm like, okay. Well, here's my credit card and she's like, we don't take credit. We only take cash. And I'm like, okay. I'm gonna go to the ATM. How much should I withdraw? She's like, I can't tell you. The cops come walking and I'm like, guys, this is absurd. So ultimately. This other guy says something and I don't remember exactly what he said. But I like kind of looked at him and I was like, are you patronizing me? Like, why are you getting involved? Like, who do you think you are? You like, what are you, a judge or something? You a justice? Like, I knew he wasn't because I know what they look like, but nonetheless. So he kind of sneaks back in and slides a paper towards me and it says on there, it's a hundred dollar fee. And I like looked at the lady and I'm like. And the cops are like. There's an ATM downstairs and I'm like, cool. So I go get the money and of course, and again. This is all on video. Every word I'm saying, I videotape. They knew I was videotaping. It didn't matter to them. They're so far outside of accountability, nothing matters to them because they'll never be held accountable. Until now, and I'll tell you how. So after paying the fee. Which I initially objected to, and I even included in there that I felt like these fees were extortion, blah, 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 because they're never actually. Addressing the merits. They're dismissing everything without addressing the merits. Uh, the Supreme Court decides not to dock it. So. They stole that fee out of like, she fought. Made me pay that fee and then they were like, we're not even gonna dock it. We'll keep the fee. Right? Now, Doherty, who's just a. Big time dickhead. I mean, he's just a piece of crap judge. He's not like. The worst judge on earth, but he is a dick and he's a piece of crap and he. Thinks he's intimidating, but really all he is is a judge, which. You know, sure, they're intimidating when you're in their courtroom because you know they can lie their ass off. And it can cost you your freedom if you're, you know, on the wrong side of. The, the hearing, if you're on the criminal side. But either way, so. We get to that hearing. Again. OPS files their motion to dismiss. Well, well, two, not, not two full days, but. Not the same night before the hearing. As they did last time. So instead of five days. I at least got two this time and instead of, you know, twenty-three hours, I at least got forty-one. But. The point is, we go into court and of course. The judge, first thing out of his mouth, well. Think we need to, first thing he says is, well, we're here on a hearing scheduled by. Omaha Public Schools. I said, I scheduled the hearing. He's like, don't talk. It's like, whatever. So, of course, then he goes to the whole, we have to hear them first because, you know, if, if. If we don't have jurisdiction or if there's this or that, blah, blah, blah. And I'm like, yeah, whatever. So then their attorney proceeds to say a bunch of false things that aren't true. The first time I say I object, the judge says, you can't object. No, no, well, he says, no objections, right? So when I start talking. I explain out the situation now. It's kind of complex. But in order to get it out of federal court. For remand, I actually changed the brief a little. Where in the first one I had like cited that free speech is. You know, being violated here, but it wasn't actually like. I wasn't suing for the First Amendment. I was just saying like, this is covered under First Amendment, but it was like a. You know, a footnote to a footnote. Well, that's why they said, oh, well, it's jurisdiction. So I removed all that. Remanded it back to federal court. But then realized that I had not been served. So. And the funniest thing about this, one of the trolls online. That's also just, uh, you know, kind of a pathetic little baby. He sent me an email going. Blah, blah, blah. Looks like you got moved to federal court. And I'm like, huh? I'm like, what case are you talking about? And then he tells me, and so I wouldn't have even known they moved it. Because they didn't notify me, but for this troll online who hates me that. You know, sent me a message trying to mock me and little did he know, he actually clued me into the fact that they had moved it with that. Now. Why is this important? Because you're required to notify your opponent of a removal or any action, right? So I waited another few days, two weeks went by. Still hadn't received anything from them. They certified they served me, but they didn't. And I get daily scans of my email. Or my, my mail from the postal service. So I can prove that nothing from them came in that period of time. So.
Is this still on, all in September or, where, where we at the timeline here?
Uh, this would have been in, uh, November.
Okay.
Yep. So, so I filed for a default because. One, when it's remanded, right? It is remanded back to the court as if. It had never left, which means the clock does not stop ticking, right? Because it was to, because it was for lack of service. Like it could be remanded back and start the clock, but they didn't serve me. So it was technically void ab initio, which means it was. Void before, you know, it, it never occurred. So technically their original timeframe had already been exhausted and they never responded. So I filed for a, a motion for default judgment, which of course was ignored. Then they filed a response to the amended complaint, which was void ab initio as well, like it. It's an amended complaint in the federal court, but that was void because they never served me. So everything from there. Is out. But they filed it as evidence. And then responded to it. And I said to the judge, like. You can't do that. You can't. Take an amended complaint that's, doesn't exist. It's not real. Like it was there in federal court, but it wasn't moved over by the federal court. They can't bring it over here as the attorneys. And then you use it as the reason to dismiss because. That's against the law. It's just not how it works. Well. That didn't matter. He went and did that anyways. So. In any case. Now what I've got is just this huge, uh. Documented trail, like eight straight months of. Videos of people lying to me, videos of people kicking me out and getting police involved. Emails telling me I can't have information. Emails telling me I can't come back and that I have to do, so like then they try to foreclose all your avenues. Well. You can't come back to the Capitol. You have to do everything through writing. Okay, but you guys don't respond. You know what I mean? Like, I can send you the stuff through email or whatever, but you don't respond. So what you're saying is. I can't do anything. I can't come here. I could try to reach out to you, but you won't respond. So. At, at this point. Now I should mention to you, over the course of years. I have reached out to multiple agent, uh, news agencies, whatever. One in particular, who's a guy that I like. Liked. I mean, I don't know, like, I like him, but he's just weak. And he's a radio host, uh, in the mornings on, uh, a talk radio channel here in. In, uh, Omaha. Well, we share the same values. And this guy will talk. About things going on in other areas or states or places that, you know, a school board. Did this or, you know, he'll also spend twenty minutes talking about the colors on Rocket Car Wash in the morning when he's on his way to work. Because gosh, today they were really red and looked real scary. So like. He has the time if he wanted to cover it. Well. I reached out to him. He says, yeah, I'm gonna reach out to the school board and. Then he reaches out to him and then all of a sudden it's like, yeah, I, I just don't see it. I don't, you know. I'm sending him all the stuff. Same with some of these other channels, right? Don Bacon, our, our, uh, one of our, uh, congressmen here. Uh, the mayor, um.
Maybe you should start calling into live, uh, live radio shows so you can get, you get something out to the public.
Well, I did something better than that and that's where we're getting to.
Alright.
So in, in January, after the judges lied again and again and again, and he finally dismissed it. Which again, he dismissed it for a lot, lack of jurisdiction. And failure to state a claim. You can't, you can't do that. If you don't have jurisdiction, you can't decide whether or not there was a claim that was stated, right?
Right.
So I finally said, you know what? Everybody in Nebraska is connected. All these agencies, all these attorneys, all these businesses, because I'd taken stuff, half a dozen attorneys, none of them will touch it. What are they gonna do? Go after the judges and the Attorney General? What are they gonna do? Go after the judges and the attorney general? You know what I mean? And at this time, it was just like, hey, I'm just trying to get these records. Well, none of them are gonna touch it because. The way they.
This is the records case, right?
This is the public records case, which I had to go public records to trap them. You get what I'm saying? I couldn't go civil rights anymore because there was no way I was getting through that battle, even though I was a hundred percent correct. And the evidence proved it. So I went with something that was so black and white, which is public records, because I knew they wouldn't give me what I wanted because it would destroy them. So I thought, let's take one more outside shot here. Okay? And I went to the FBI three times. First time I explained stuff to him. Second time I updated him. And they were like. Junior intake agents or something, I guess. I don't know. They were adults, but they made it sound like, uh, they had badges though, because they flash them to you. Uh, and then the third time, which was just a couple of weeks ago, was like a real FBI agent. And I explained it all to him. And of course, like everybody I talked to, I, I just don't know what you're talking about. It's like, I don't know what you don't know about what I'm talking about. It's not that hard. Ask questions if you don't get it. So I said, here's all you need to do. Call the attorney general and ask them why they refuse to change that published lie. Ask them that. If they don't answer you, then sounds to me like you got reason to be confused. If they do answer you, it's gonna be because we don't have to, right? So, well, he's assured me. Now, and here's the other thing that, like the FBI, for example, well, we don't, we don't necessarily up, I said, so, you know, you're gonna. Let me know when you talk to him. Well, we don't, we don't necessarily, um, update people on ongoing investigations. I said, bro. You can't do this without me. I have all the evidence. You can't just do it. You guys can't possibly do it without me. It doesn't exist without my information. So. You're gonna have to contact me. I don't care what you say that, oh, we're the FBI. We're gonna look at this. I was like, what are you gonna look into if you don't have my information? Nothing. So there's another trap lie they said is like, oh, we don't follow up. It's like, shut up. You would follow up on an investigation if it was a fricking murder for hire plot. Oh, speaking of that. Just throwing this one out here. I'm not gonna take a lot of time on it. So Joe Exotic, Joe, Joe, Joe Exotic reached out to me. And I looked at his case and that guy was railroaded.
Yeah.
They had a Parks and Recreation Federal Agent, like somebody whose. Typical job is to make sure that the pheasant population isn't dwindling. Running point on a murder for hire plot against a guy who he already had a grudge against. And they had all these phone calls and all these recordings and all these, like, the trial was like. It, it blew my mind. I read through everything. So I wrote an amicus brief on his behalf, which, because there's an appeal going right now. And so I'm gonna submit it here soon. Um, you, you guys can read it though. It's in this final document because I threw everything together at this last one. So here's the point. So. There's this little thing called RICO, which is basically an organized crime over years. With multiple people. Now, usually it's for getting people like the mafia because.
Al Capone and.
Correct, right?
But it's what, it's what, it's how governments run. I, I think they took their playbook from the mafia.
Absolutely, they did. Here's the problem. What you have now that I can prove, right? Is you have nine straight years of coordinated effort that's so coordinated, they don't even have to communicate. They just know their position and how to run their job, right? You've got different ombudsmen from the bank to the school. You have different attorney generals from the bank to the school. You have different judges, although not always, a lot of times get the same ones. The point is. You've got the school, the bank, Kansas City Fed Reserve, Consumer Finance Protection Bureau, Attorney Generals. Ombudsman, all the little players in between, all the attorneys, they're, all of them are working to. Maintain this stronghold, which is citizens funding their own suppression because. When you, like you said, when they tell you, well, you know, you, first of all, they say, you gotta get an attorney. Well, when you can't get an attorney. And you try to litigate yourself, then they say, well, we can't do anything in litigation. Well, that's not true. All these things they say are false, right? But the key is other predicate acts, mail fraud. When they sent me a threat of prosecution for practicing law without a license. Knowing that they had created that situation. It wasn't true. It was the day after my fricking hearing. That I just eviscerated their attorney and the judge. And the next day I get this, nope, there was no complaint. Mail fraud is a predicate to Rico. So when they sent something to me, knowing it was false. To intimidate me, to further their conspiracy, which I'm a threat to it because I see all through it now. Uh, every time they emailed me, a, any of their coordination behind the scenes. Now, I'm not gonna break down. Uh, anybody who wants to read the brief, by the time I'm done talking today, uh, you'll know where to find it. And it's not quite complete, but it's complete enough that you've never seen anything like it in your life. So. There was a parallel action I ran and this is where it gets really good. So I was doing all the stuff, federal and local here. And then when I realized that this is the criminal organization that. There is no way through because they're all lying. And it's not even like subjective lies or sneaky lies or hidden lies. It's black and white lies. Who scheduled the, the appointment? How many children do you have? Like the reason he left out how many kids I has, have is because the one he left out was my five-year-old autistic son. Who is gonna be in the school district the longest. And is a more sympathetic character than my two adult children and my daughter in high school.
So how'd you trap them?
What's that?
So how'd you trap them?
So here's what happened. Simultaneously, in late twenty twenty-three, somebody stole a picture. Well, they, I mean, they copied it off my wife's Facebook, a picture of her and I. And they used it as their profile picture. They used my first middle and last name. They used my Supreme Court win. On Twitter, right? And then they just started harassing me and then harassing other people, right? Trying to pick fights, right? Well.
They stole your identity?
Correct. But social media platforms, they never get in trouble for anything, right? So I copyrighted the photograph because copyright is different than harassment or any of these other things. And I filed for legal to their registered agents. DMCA, uh, Digital Millennium Copyright Act complaints saying that. My intellectual property, which is my picture that I own and it's copyrighted, which I do have a copyright. I, I copyrighted it through the US. Copyright system because I knew if I wanted to beat them, you, you, you get why I did this. If I wanted to beat them, I had to find a way that they couldn't get out of, right? Well, I filed for complaints. They came back and responded and said, this is impersonation and harassment. So try filing a impersonation and harassment complaint. Uh, you know, and this is after I sent them my license. I, you know, all this stuff. So.
You're talking about Twitter, right?
I am talking about Twitter.
Right.
So, so, and these people were relentless on me, man. They were just pounding me, which, you know, whatever it is, what it is. So finally, Twitter realizing that I was persistent, suspended me. Now I had a premium account at the time, which I actually got specifically because. They were impersonating me and I figured, well, I have a premium account, premium has an obligation to respond, right?
And this is, this is when it turned to X, right? This is not really Twitter, it's X.
It was, yeah, this is X, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So I had a premium account. They suspended me, which they didn't never tell me why. I couldn't get any responses. Somebody's still using my picture or name and likeness, right? And I can't even cancel it. Like, there's no way to cancel. So. I just kind of sat there and that's when I did all that stuff last summer with the attorney general and stuff. So I let that mill. When I realized at the end of this, in December this year, twenty twenty-four, that I was running into this. Impenetrable wall of lies that were coming through the system. I said, okay, now it's time to deploy my Twitter suit. So I formed a brief that is devastating, breaking it all down. And I sent them a copy on Christmas. And then I, ultimately after everything, it was served with a subpoena. On the twelfth of February, right? But I sent them, January twenty-fifth, I sent them, or, or December twenty-fifth, I sent them my. Lawsuit, just to say like, hey, do you want to talk before I file this? Literally like five, six, seven days later, a week later. They changed their user agreement for paid users. And so I was like, this is interesting. So I looked at it. And, and this is all true. I swear to God, I can prove everywhere. I looked at it and they've literally changed. A ton of things that show that they actively went close loopholes that I found. They've changed venues. They've removed, uh, location on their user agreements. So people don't quite know where to send it. They, 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 they've changed so many things, a lot of which were very subtle, but I, I knew what I was looking for. And, uh, so it's a paid user agreement account. This is where it gets really good. So recognizing that, then, then it says by not, like, as long as you do nothing. You've accepted this new agreement, which goes into effect on March fifteenth, right? So what do I do? I cancel my premium subscription because it already served its purpose. And I just noticed like, maybe three or four days ago, like. I still have this premium subscription. What, what's up with that? Cause like, I haven't gotten work for it. I know I canceled it. So I go in and I start looking. They literally gave me, this is after the lawsuit was filed, right? They gave me a free premium account based on advertising spend or something, which I don't do. So. Cause I'm like, why am I still premium? Well. So effectively they gave me an account, premium free. Um, so that, and I can send you a screenshot that proves it. Like, I, I mean, it is what it is. And, and I, I, I have this feeling that they think, well, like, if we can make it past the fifteenth of March. We can toss all this stuff out because it's all covered. But they don't understand the fact that. You know, if somebody comes to your house and you give them a twenty-dollar bill, you know, you gave it to them. If you say, hey, shovel the driveway and I'll give you a twenty-dollar bill, you can expect they'll shove the, shovel the driveway and come back. And get their money, but you can't give them a twenty-dollar bill and go, hey, you, you need to shovel the driveway. Well, I'm sorry, there, there was no acceptance. I mean. I didn't accept it. You gave it to me. I, I, you know, I did nothing. I didn't agree to your terms. I'm not paying. So that won't work for him and it wouldn't anyways because, so, so here's the point. They responded yesterday. To the motion to dismiss, right? At four forty-five in the afternoon, which was.
Twitter, Twitter, yeah, XX responded?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. And they have Shake Hardy and Bacon LLP, which is like a giant law firm with. You know, top, top litigators, but.
And you sued them over, you, you sued them over copyright infringement, correct?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So their attorneys finally mustered the courage to, uh. To respond, which they had to. I mean, yesterday was the day. They hadn't responded yesterday, this morning. At what midnight, there'd have been a, a request for a default, but they did. And. What I drew out of them couldn't be any better. They effectively said, and, and again, that's what I sent you. Well, actually I sent you my brief. But they effectively said that, one, uh. They're, they're protected by section two thirty as an ISP. But that they're protected by the First Amendment as a publisher, right? They're making both those arguments. Now, I don't wanna sound overly educated here, but. You can't be an ISP and a publisher. So. Their argument fails on the surface because now it, it gets even better. These.
Well, they're just one in both ways. They're, they're throwing stuff at the wall and they're gonna use it, try to use both sides later, whatever side they need later. And they're hoping you don't notice the difference.
That, well, they already know I know the difference because it took me twenty-three hours to get a, a brief back into the system. That just eviscerates their entire life. I mean, I guarantee you, nobody is sleeping tonight from that law, law firm because. I pointed out that one, what I just said, they want to be a publisher and an ISP. You can't be both. You can't be an internet service provider and a publisher because one requires active decision-making. The other is simply hosting, right? And that's the difference. They're saying, they're saying like, as if they were. Qualcomm or Cox Communications or Verizon, like, oh, we're doing is hosting things back and forth, right? But they're not. They're making editorial decisions. So they can't take both protections because they aren't.
Right, yeah, of course.
They also, and this is, this one's great, honestly. So. They try to cite Calif, now, it's a federal case copyright. And it's in Texas where they're headquartered, right? But they try to claim that California state law should take precedence. Now let me tell you the absurdity behind this. Texas has its own laws. Federal law is federal law. But California, X Corp left. Because of the regulation there, right? So they got big tax breaks moving to Texas, I think six and a half million dollars. They got all kinds of benefits from moving to Texas. But now that they've gotta be held accountable for something, they want to use. California state law and Ninth Circuit as all the things they're quoting, right? So they quote all these cases from California. Well, first of all, I point out how absurd it is that. You know, they're taking all these benefits and they made this big to do about leaving California. And now they wanna, the second that they're being confronted, they want to run back to California for protection. Because it, you know, that's what it is. It's absurd. Plus it, it doesn't exist. The, the. A Texas judge is not gonna rule under California state law about some arbitrary. Case from twenty-three years ago. You know what I mean? It just doesn't work that way. Um, and then, but the best argument that they make is that. They're allowed to basically have their own terms of service, right? And the second that somebody signs up to that, they're under Twitter's terms of service, which means. Copyright infringement doesn't matter, harassment and whatever. They have their rules. They're allowed to enforce them and they're allowed to ignore them. But users are required to follow them. And even if they break the law, they're not, there's no recourse. And, and you should see their new user agreement. I mean, it literally.
I bet it's, I, I bet it's a doozy. I bet it's a doozy. And, and what, what other defendants did you put in there besides X? I mean, obviously the school board or whoever was doing, whoever impersonated you, right?
This is where it gets really good. So I have this Rico case, right? I have this amicus brief for Joe Exotic. And then I have this Twitter lawsuit that they responded to me yesterday. So what I did was I basically just, you know, how, how do I put this? I grabbed their attorney kind of like right here and stuck my finger right under here. And I've been pulling him around. The room for the last three hours, making him call me uncle. Because not only did I absolutely annihilate their argument with logic that makes them look like first year. Law students. I mean, they look stupid after what I put into this beca, because. At the end of the day, they, you know, they use all three of their most recent. In the last three years, they use all three user terms of service. And they'll go, like, up here, they'll go, well, in this terms of service, blah, blah, blah. And then they'll go, but in this relevant terms of service, blah, blah, blah. It's like they're skipping between terms of service for the moment, for the one that helps them. They're trying to get the law moved to a jurisdiction that they think is gonna help them. And they're trying to claim. Being both A and B at the same time, which they can't. So it wasn't hard for me to just absolutely crush their logic. But here's what else I did. One paragraph here, one paragraph here. This one says, now that I see they've got Shake Hardy and Bacon LLP, the attorneys. Who were also attorneys for the Federal Reserve from years ago. And I realized that. Uh, because I recognized the name and I knew these are, these people are people I don't like for whatever reason. And so I went back and found it. So I connected them into the Rico case because I know they communicated. And then one pair, one paragraph about how. One pair, one paragraph about how. A guy who was, you know, whose main job is to count deer headed up a a federal. Uh, murder for hire plot against Joe Exotic. And then I put his brief in now. I did these two things for a specific reason. One, Joe Exotic was railroaded and I feel like his story should get some attention. So. It was worth it and I I hope that people see it and read it and realize that there's an innocent guy sitting in jail. Dying of cancer right now. And I can tell you, I I I'm not saying he's innocent of everything. I don't know. I didn't look at that, but he is innocent. Of what he's in jail for, simple. And anybody that would want to argue that with me. I would love to because you you can't win. I it's, you know, you may as well be Twitter. You're not gonna win. So I basically just, you know, licked my hand. And slapped the attorney across the face a bunch of times. And at the same time, I included my Rico brief and the Joe Exotic brief, meaning. Because here's why I did that. I think we can agree that. Anytime Twitter gets sued and actually responds in writing, that legitimizes, right? So now that they've responded to me in the it through, you know, in the court filing system. People are gonna start noticing. Once they see what I wrote, they're gonna wanna read those other briefs. Once they see what I wrote there. Their whole world changes whether they like it or not, except for people that are already in the system, which already know like. You wouldn't be at all shocked at what you read, although you would be real impressed with how well I put it together. Because you already know exactly what I'm saying. You know, it's not like you and I are are naive to this. It's just. Materializing it in a way that that lends itself. So here's here's the whole point. At the end of the day, I've accused, you know, fifteen, twenty judges, including judges in the Eighth Circuit. Uh, judges in the appeals court, uh, you know, federal and and local. Um, you know, more than a dozen attorneys, half a dozen news organizations. And and here's the other thing. I'm not suing the Attorney General. I'm suing Mike Hilgers in his individual capacity because. He wasn't acting under the color of his job, because I'm pretty sure there's nothing written. In any of their job descriptions that says, hey, obstruct, prevent. And harm citizens as much as you can. And if they can't prove that their job is to do all that stuff, then everything they've done has been wrong. They're not protected by anything. Even the judges. Aren't protected because they weren't acting in good faith, which I can prove because it's in the transcript what the truth is. Evidence is the truth, but what they say in their opinions and the way they handle the situation. Is completely false. And again. When I say false, I mean false. So what effectively I've done is. Encompass pretty much every agency in Nebraska, including the FBI. Now I just have to add that in. It's not in that brief because fuck that. I mean, I I'm not playing this this game, you know? You you look at my 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 uh. X account, I beat up the the Omaha and the FBI constantly. I'm like, hey, what are you guys afraid of? Why won't you look at this? Why won't you look at this? I could probably threaten. Not now I would threaten, but I I could, I could probably say I knew about some sort of an assassination attempt and they would. You know, they would just ignore it because they don't want to engage me because I terrify them because I've done nothing wrong. And I have all the evidence and they know it. And so at the end of the day. What I did was took a platform the size of Twitter. I just literally crushed. The soul of their attorneys, all of them. They have two different law firms working on this.
So you made you you made X your uh PR firm.
Dude, and there lies the best part of this. I'm using the platform itself to disseminate their own bad behavior. In a way that then brings everybody into everything. And once it gets out, there is no putting this cat back in the bag. And you, anybody who takes the time to read my briefs will understand two things. One. Nobody's ever had this much concrete evidence laid out in this fashion. As I have and two, I wrote it in a way that anybody will understand as long as they sit there and. Read it. I I mean, you don't have to read it straight through, but because we're talking. I I put, I'm gonna say, I mean, neither of these briefs, man, my briefs, they're on average, they're like. Eighty pages or something. I don't know. Probably I would say on average, like fifteen thousand words. Yeah, they're not terrible, but they're not short. But they're unmistakable and nobody will be confused as to what they're reading. And then. That brings me to my final point, which is when you read it, if you take me seriously. The chances of anybody as a self-represented litigant winning even a rock solid case. These days is probably about one tenth of a percent. Like, sure, does it happen? Of course it does. You know, lightning hits people every day too, right? But how many of them have you ever met? You get what I'm saying?
Right.
Because you may hear about somebody who won as a pro se. But you don't hear about the twenty-eight thousand people in between. That just basically got drowned up in a in a matter of months. See, the the. The way I broke through this, the key that they couldn't contain. Was that si- systems like this were never designed. For a long-term battle against an individual, right? And so at the beginning, you're frustrated, then you feel motivated, then you're confused. And then all of a sudden, it's like. Okay, and then everything makes sense and you can trap them every step of the way so that. They only have bad options, you know, because I would consider the truth a bad option when you've been hiding it for three years.
Sure.
It it's better than hiding it, but for them, it's a bad option. So. Lie again and let me prove it or admit the truth. Well, since I know they're not gonna admit the truth, I just make sure to. Position this lie right here in a way that's so clear and accurate that whatever they answer. Is gonna have to be a flat lie. It's not gonna be subjective. It's not gonna be like, well, blah, 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 in accordance to the prophecy, no. No, you said this to this, right? Because you didn't want to admit to this. And so at the end of the day, if if I can get. Enough eyes on this, if people will just share it, repost it. And the world sees it, all our jobs become easier because courts courts will be like, I don't want to be part of it. I in fact. I also attached it so that everybody involved knows that like. Every single person who lies or cheats or violates their job. Is getting added into this before I ever submit it. And I'm submitting it in Colorado. Where the FHA is because they hate Nebraska. And so. All I needed was one person that lives in Colorado. You get what I'm saying? Like. They can't contain it because my choice of locations. Extends between eight to twelve states. So.
That's uh, we might, we might have to do a GoFundMe for uh, just for, just to pay for your um, depositions.
Dude. I, well, here's the thing. They're not gonna wanna go to a trial. They're not gonna wanna go to discovery because. It will take me all of about thirty seconds. To ask the right questions to the programmer who's required to show me stuff. That they go, okay, wait, this ain't happening. But, you know, we'll we'll see how that works. But uh, yeah, if we, yeah, I I could definitely uh. It's it's the costs and the fees and everything.
Yeah, uh, uh, look, hey, trust me, you're talking, you're talking to, you're preaching to the choir over here.
And that's the other thing people gotta know. It's like, it's not just a grind and it's not just. Frustrating like no matter how good you think your case is, no matter how smart you think you are, no matter how. Friendly or cool or whatever you think the judge or any of the other people were at the end of the day. No, you are a problem to them. They are going to dispatch you. And the only way you'll ever get around it is pure luck of the draw with a judge that. Happens to just feel favorable towards you or dislike the opponent. Or, but I'll tell you this much, if a judge dislikes their your opponent, they're gonna find a way to get it away from that judge. Simple as that, because your opponent has an attorney and generally speaking.
Yep, yep.
You get what I'm saying?
It's a, it's a big club and you're not in it.
Well, no, and it's it's a, it's a self-closing club because the, you know. The state agencies tasked to look into things tell you, they can't do it to get an attorney, but the attorneys. Aren't gonna fight a state agency. So they say no, but then when you go to court. The judges aren't upholding their side, even though they're supposed to be separate from these state agencies. I mean, if, when there's no separation between the branches, what you have is one hell of a conspiracy. I mean.
Yeah.
It's an, it's a criminal.
Have you looked up your judges on the robe room?
Um, for Twitter?
For all, any of them.
I I look up every judge, but I'll tell you who I got with this X lawsuit. Hey, they rebalanced the docket. You know how they do that, like, oh. You you just got moved from this judge to this judge, right? But, you know, for caseload management, right? Cause.
Sure, yeah, 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 of course.
Right. But this actually worked in my favor because what what I got was. A judge that was immediately cool at first. And then told me like one thing to correct, which I did right away. And then when I sent the subpo- subpoena to get it signed so that I could send it to X. He immediately signed the subpoena and then they sent it to a new judge. Now this judge. Is dangerous for X Corp because he's an intellectual property genius. Like in the country, there's like. A judge or two that are at this level of intellectual property cases. And he's known for moving things fast. He doesn't, he he doesn't. He's known for being fair, but most importantly. You know, this is somebody who absolutely Twitter does not want overseeing this case because. They don't, he he, they don't have any connection to him, right? I mean, even their attorneys are from LA, well, at least half of them. Cause that's where they were from. These are all their relationships. So I have a judge that. Ha- hasn't historically been friendly to companies that abuse. Is a an intellectual property genius with which lands copyright directly in his. A- avenue. And it's an environment that Twitter's never been um sued in. So they just really have no advantage. And I also, right up front, before they ever. Once I read that um, change of. Terms, I also submitted right away saying, uh, under no circumstances should. We be allowed to move this venue anywhere. Like, no matter what they say, this is the venue. So I I feel like I'm in a a good position here. I think anybody who reads the the brief against X Corp. Will be compelled to read the others that are linked in there. And the one about the Rico, I've got. Links to all the YouTube videos, because it's like, here's this idiot. You know, here are these cops telling me that, you know, I'm not allowed to be here and here's the AG lying to me here and. So I'm just linking all the videos, screenshots of their stupid comments of.
You may get to capitalize on the the negative sentiment against uh, against Elon right now. At least on the Democrat side.
It's, let me tell you one other funny thing. So because I'm more conservative in nature. Uh, I am a target for Democrats. On Twitter, right? But their message. Aligns with what I'm doing, which is I'm trying to help everybody, right? Because if they can do it to me with all the experience I have and knowing that I'm not wrong. What are they doing to everybody else who's in it for their first time or what? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to fix the system. So the left should really appreciate that because I'm trying to make sure that people aren't unfairly. Put in prison or whatever. But they hate me because I'm conservative, so they don't support me, right? Then you have the conservatives who hate the fact that. Everybody I'm going after is a conservative, but it's only because I went to them first, because. I already knew that a lot of the people that were on the left in my state. Were full of crap and it wouldn't, you get what I'm saying? Like.
Never underestimate the double standards people live up to.
Right, right. Well, so at the end of the day, I have no support on the right. I have no support on the left. And it's just me sitting here in the middle. So I've literally just done all this through attrition and strategy and. And documentation. Documentation is critical. If I didn't have it all, nobody would ever believe what I said because it's too far-fetched.
Yeah.
It's way, it's way too far-fetched.
And and who was the, who is the person that that copied your photo and and tried to? You don't know, but I mean, what organization, what what organization were they part of?
Um, a group of online trolls.
But it wasn't the school system though, it wasn't?
Oh, hell no. No, this is totally separate. This is just somebody that was trolling me online. But the problem was I'm smarter than they are and they used my picture, so I copyrighted it. And then when Twitter refused to take it down. After admitting impersonation, after seeing my license four different times, like they gave up their protection, like. Had they taken it down, I would have no lawsuit because they addressed it as soon as it was brought to their attention and. That I proved it, right? But after four times of being notified and four times admitting that they know it's me, but. They're not gonna do anything about it and then suspending me, they gave up their right to say, well, we're protected. Because to be protected for copyright infringement, you have to act. If you know, and you have to put measures in place to prevent repeat offenders. Well.
Right.
You haven't done either. And the guy that, the guy that was doing it before, he started doing it again. And it was funny because he used the same picture. I reported it and I was like, watch this. And you know, because.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that whoever whoever impersonated you uh, was part of. Part of your lawsuit with the school board or records request or something like that.
The these people want never to hear my name or see me again. They would never, ever, ever, ever do that. None of them. Could be a Twitter employee, but nobody in Nebraska, they want nothing to do with me.
There's a, there's a link somewhere.
Which.
Whoever was impersonating you on X was trying to damage your reputation because you're. Throwing up so much trouble in uh, in Omaha. So there's some link somewhere.
Nope, wasn't about Omaha.
Okay.
Nope, nope, they just, you know, they're a group of trolls and uh, a lot of them are like. They say they're attorneys, but I I mean, actually, I think they probably are because they know a lot. They're just not smart enough to figure out a way around the truth, which is what attorneys are always trying to do. Figure out a way around the truth.
Yeah.
So they get annoyed and then one of them just kept taking it to the extreme and he took my picture and. So I've turned that into the pivotal turning point for all social media because, you know. Like this will be a landmark case. They can't get out of it.
Well, we will see, we we will uh, watch and learn for sure. And I hope that you keep us updated on all of that.
You know, I will, dude. You're like, dang, it's two in the morning. Why are you texting me? I forgot, dude, you're an hour behind. It's only one here.
Yeah, yeah, well, there's, you you aren't the only one, trust me.
I expect not to be.
But I I am, I'm like the semi night owl and I don't wake up too early, but I don't go to bed too too late, but I I do stay up late and you know, so it's like a. Nine AM to one AM, usually I'm 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 up, so.
Yeah.
Uh, and there's always, you gotta look at this, bro. And so I try to, I try to keep up. I do try to keep up.
You're gonna get, you're gonna get a lot less of those once I get through with this because the whole system is gonna realize that the time is has come.
Well, I'm uh, I'm I'm gonna come and move in your guest house when you get all that money.
I'm asking for a lot.
I'm sure. And copyright is probably the most likely to succeed. Uh, especially, if you don't have government involved in the Twitter suit. You're more than likely gonna, gonna get a resolution to that.
I mean, hey, they don't have to resolve anything. We can go to discovery and I'm gonna find a thousand times worse stuff.
Oh, they won't let, they won't let you get that far. They won't let you get that far, but.
But it ain't gonna be cheap to avoid it.
Right, they'll, they're gonna, they're gonna bluff you right up into it, though. They're they're gonna, they're gonna try to try to do everything they can to bluff it. That far.
It's gonna be like this. Now, we'll just go to trial and I'm gonna be like, cool, because as soon as the judge. Dismisses your motion to dismiss and we move on, you don't get another chance until.
We, our our US Marshal's case is a motion to dismiss has been finished for over two years. And it's sitting on the judge's death. I know everybody's gonna tell me, go write a writ of mandamus and whatnot, but. We've, we've just, we've discussed why we haven't done.
You wanna know what I do?
I'm listening, I'm listening.
I've got so many strategies, but this one actually just worked beautifully with the appeals court, right? So I appealed. Now you gotta remember, my timeframe is like, I'm pushing them daily. I'm emailing the AG, I'm calling them punks, so to speak. Asking them why they're afraid to, you know, but with the appeals court, I. But with the appeals court, I, after week one, I, I submitted another brief saying, oh, look at this. Turns out the AG has gone three straight years without ever ruling in favor of the citizens. That's a hundred and eighty-five in a row and I broke down this whole brief. And then the week following that, I did another one. Well, then last week, I sent one saying, um. I, okay, so I highlighted the judge that had the brothel that just got shot and killed. That was having sex in his chambers or whatever.
The one shot by the sheriff you're talking about?
Yep, I highlighted that case, Joe Exotic. And the judge that was drawing the ankle bracelets or sharing the ankle bracelet, my very first ankle bracelet. Memes on with the little black kid in, in court that she got reprimanded for recently. I don't know if you heard about that.
Yeah, a little bit.
But I, I said to the Court of Appeals, I said, since you guys are gonna drag your feet. Expect that every single Friday until you respond. You are gonna get another brief breaking down more corrupt judges and the system nationwide. Just to, you know, just to keep pointing out how corrupt you guys are. Guess how fast they made a decision? I didn't make it this Friday.
Wow.
Yeah, I did it with the Eighth Circuit too. I skipped all that because I didn't wanna get stuck in the weeds. But I did the same thing with the Eighth Circuit.
It's a strategy we'll have to address in another video. We're, we're, we're a little over two hours at the moment, so. Let's uh, let's uh, let's call that. But um, yeah, um, my, my plan is um, this week or next week to. Call the judge's clerk and tell them that there's, you know, it's, we're, we pay for services from the court. Not giving them this step of services, which works in Mississippi, but we will, we will see. But in the meantime.
Getting it. I put that in mind too because it is.
Yeah, exactly.
They're taking leave with no X, with no, you know, they're not, they're not doing anything. Plus, you may just attach my Rico brief and say, we're gonna do this here if you guys don't. Get your X together.
Man, well, we'll, we'll look at it. We'll look at it. But uh, in the meantime, thank you for taking the time to, to tell your story. And um, and uh, we, we wanna follow this. Please, please let us know when there's some updates and we'll, we'll have you back on. And uh, try to tie it in and and do our best to publicize it.
And my um, just so you guys know, my Twitter handle is. At Pro Say Self Help. And you should go and share what I have there because when people see it. The momentum will go. So I, and it, and again, everybody watching, Gary in particular for, for. Uh, always doing these great things for us. Thank you so much.
Well, I, I appreciate it. I hope, I hope we can help someone along the way. Uh, we, all our shorts do go on X, so uh, we'll make sure that we, when we link up and and you can share those, but. Thank you very much. I'll give you the last word.
I, you know what? I, hopefully people got something out of this. I, you know, I don't recommend getting into long-term litigation. It's. It's not fun, but.
It's stressful, expensive and time-consuming.
And I'm, and I'm hoping honestly, at the end of the day, I'm hoping I can. Make enough of an impact that the system recognizes it's time to make a change because technology has caught up with us.
We'll find out. Thank you, Justin.
See you, man. Take care.